Alright, so the following meeting's order is six oh five, February eighteenth, uh, goal conference.
Councilmember Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Solomon.
Here.
Councilmember Penello.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Present.
Councilmember Michaels.
Here.
You all rise as soon as I can.
Student of the United States of America and to their republic stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So in our moment of reflection, I'd like to, you know, recognize some first responders and their families. You know, in our sister city. Next to us in Vington, we lost firefighter cadet to a recent collapse of a building during the active duty. And I think we're a so representation down tomorrow to this funeral for this his young family. So we keep them in our prayers as well as locally here, Chief Sherman and firefighter Sherman, both retired and current firefighter. Lost their mother and wife Monica listening as well. So we keep them in our hearts, but along the side with these. Thank you. Uh, privilege to the floor. So um, I don't have anybody on there, correct? Andy, if anybody would like to speak to that this year. Alright, moving that forward.
We're going to the mayor's report.
So a couple of things. First, I want to introduce Jade Spansik. Uh, she is a new administrative assistant in my office. We appreciate she's bringing to the table and working well to doing it week two.
Four.
Four.
Two.
That's fine.
Yeah.
You're still here.
Right. Uh, so we appreciate that and it'll be. So obviously we have a lot going on right now in our winter world, the sidewalks. You know, the DPW crews, uh, you know, we had some complaints about driving fast and speed, but I argue that if you drive the same route. I think Saturday fighting the slushes and salt, I mean, you know, four or five times in a day. But certainly keep an eye on that. They're working very hard and very diligently to try to go through. It seems like every storm we've had this year is at uh, five AM in the morning, just before rush hour and then five PM at night just afterwards. You know, and as far as the difficulties in the sidewalks, it'd be really difficult for people to keep their driveways and sidewalks. The first time I've ever lost my driveway and not been able to, you know, because if something happens during the day, something drives over or walks over your sidewalk and it's been freezing at night. So the warm temperatures in the day and cold at night, the frost is creating an upheaval on our roads. Everybody's recognized too. That pumping has done a lot to our roads, but then during the day, you get some melt off on the sidewalks and it freezes at night. So we've been a little bit understanding with sidewalks and so the codes, what they're directed is to, if the sidewalk is dangerous and slippery, uh, then that's the determination when they actually physically get out and do it and then we'll create a solution with them. About to and including it, we have to help mitigate that damage. We would consider doing something with our own assault supplies difficult for the independents. Uh, we've certainly cautioned people to walk in the sidewalks this time of year, but if we wrote everybody out, we would be right up everybody, probably the people in this room. Uh, it's very difficult to keep up with it this year and there's a lot of them that have been very diligent about doing it and I want to take that away because there's some that have been uh, that can have that ability to go do it. Some of this really been out there chipping and doing it. So, but we gotta kind of use a common sense approach here to try to do it. We're hoping next week will give us the increased weather's temperature that we have and we go back to maintaining that zero tolerance compliance. So we have been a little bit lenient. So I want everybody to be aware of that. We've also been working very hard to be able to deal with that. Um, and in the last, uh, last week, we, we won this award and uh, Mr. Wise and I were able to go to a banquet. And uh, so it's twenty four transportation project of the year award for Rott Nav. So for the engineers BCA and the contractor, Evius Sentis and son who has done the project. So as we all know, you know, it was a tough year construction wise. You know, with this team in their ninety and into the DRI project, and then the college decided to do their project at the same time and still and we had a resi- an impact on a lot of businesses on Rott Nav as well, a lot of residents, a lot going on. They, they really overhyped it. A pretty phenomenal job in keeping that on track, on task and uh, you know, being able to deal with it, although it, it's a lot easier to say now than it was at the time we're living it, but uh, so it was a great honor to, that we got uh, put up for that award and we got that award based on that. So I think that's a good testament to good heart diligence. Uh, everybody's in, uh, our DPW follow through with, make sure they're on track. The engineers keeping track of everything and keeping everything done. A lot of change orders on that road as well as we went along. So that was a great honor and certainly uh, was great to be a participant in that. And by far none, some of the other, other awardees, you know, we were really impressed in what we have, in what we've accomplished. And sometimes it's nice to sit back to do that. Um, so fire response, they had a kind of fire at Conteno's this weekend and the response was great again and were able to pull it out with very, you know, without having to have an insurance claim. There are very little distortion to the back of the metal of the building, but they're able to get ahead of that ahead of time. A lot of things worked out perfectly, although it's very slippery and all ice back there is they're fighting the same battle. We all are. Uh, you know, everybody that was maintained safe, they made great decisions. Our fire department chiefs made great decisions and having other people come in and help clean up. So they weren't tired and worried about slip and fall issues. Uh, those are all uh, items that uh, never should go on those. Uh, we continue on with our comprehensive plan, uh, meetings. So we have internal meetings that we work on and try to work on those and try to move that forward. That'll be keep escalating up. We appreciate everybody that's volunteering and helping with that. Um, met with the county, uh, several issues. We had uh, sales tax, which is getting real close to sale tax negotiation. Hope to get some present to everybody here at our next meeting. Uh, did a jail tour. So they're uh, trying to show all the benefits that the county does for everybody during sales tax. When they go to counties, towns and villages or and, or the city and towns and villages to understand what they're more about. And then we'll also have a meeting with that with the JPS committee on safety concerns overall in the city and some first responder issues. Uh, and we'll continue to work on those items. Uh, and then uh, we're working on code and PD, we had worked together on an issue yesterday, discussion on issue up in Merrick Clear's district uh, to get cooperation. Uh, we've got cooperation from the college and uh, trying to work on concerns and come up with a new process and be able to hand handle individual concerns and complaints. So uh, we appreciate that responsibility and continue to work on that. So that's it from my mayor's report. Um, and we'll want to war reports. One, Scott.
Um, war ones were fairly quiet. Uh, you know, got some of the same reports about this and that, you know, snow removal and you know, people not staying up with things. And we've had a couple of good people, uh, in a couple of streets who have either a snow blower on a four wheeler or a really large uh, snow blower and they've at times done the entire street that they live on. And I want to thank my ward for pitching in and doing that because it is hard for some people when there's three inches of ice and snow packed on top of it all from one event. Uh, to get out there, if there's a dip in the sidewalk or something where things collect, um, I think that's been really, really good. Uh, want to thank our fire department for the great job that they've done. Um, recently the uh, the content of that was handled very, very well. Um, all of you, all of you over there did a great job. That's all that I've got.
This one.
Well, this second ward has been very quiet, even at night, I think because it's been so cold, everybody's stained inside. We do have some issues with the sidewalks and I'm glad to hear you clarify maybe that the sidewalk should not be slippery because it's very difficult to get it down to absolute sidewalk again. Um, but if people are doing their best with salt on it and scrape up what they can. That's, that's the best they can do and I appreciate that. These are, these are trying times for a lot of the, I'm going to go off script a little bit for the farmers in our area. Many of them hire people who may or may not be undocumented. Um, those people are afraid to go grocery shopping because of the rumors that are all over the place. Uh, I work with some of their children and I can only imagine if they were all gone, what the price of milk would be. If we were even able to get those cows milked. So can consider that. Thanks.
That was Penello.
Okay, so as the mayor alluded to, there've been a couple of things in the third ward. Um, once again, the house on pine crest. Um, there have been reports of uh, noise, party, et cetera, et cetera, and codes, the police, the mayor, everybody did, the landlord. Um, and she will be monitoring the situation closely. Um, we're all going to monitor the situation closely and if things don't change, their rental permit will be withdrawn. So we're working on it and we're working hard and we're doing the best that we can. Secondly, shout out to Mike Wise. Um, I got an email from a resident on Townley. And I forwarded it to Mike who responded within twenty four hours and the resident is extremely happy. If you go downtown league, uh, after Broadway going toward Rott Nav, it's become, uh, it's a mess. And DPW is fully aware of it. It's going to be addressed once we get nicer weather. Um, there's an issue with drainage, right Mike? And uh, that's going to, not only is the road going to be paved, but the drainage issue is also going to be addressed. So and the resident is extremely happy with the response and he's good. So we're good. Other than that, I'm good.
Make a correction if we get better. This one.
Yeah, um, I received a couple of calls about sidewalks. And constituents had to walk in the road as opposed to the sidewalk. Um, and I told them I'd let Cole go and I called Roy and you know, Roy said we're doing everything we can and I, I know they are. Um, but I didn't tell the constituents that I would call. Um, I actually got a couple of calls about Townley, cause oh my God, it's horrendous.
Um, nothing can be done now?
No, no. Well, same thing for Tompkins Street. Um, and the guys were there, I don't know, a week or two ago. And they appeared to be filling thing, but it's not time. It's not, you know, it's not, it's right. Um, and I did ask, you know, well, what's going to wake me up five times during the night if you guys fill all of these? So maybe they, you know, lighter. So I do get awoken five times during the night. Um, but other than that, things have been pretty quiet.
Thank you. Sir Thompson.
Yes, uh, two things, mostly weather related also. Um, just for, and they're really reminders, uh, the snowbanks. Uh, try to even those out, especially on your driveway. So people can actually see um, around them and the same goes with uh, corners. If you have trash cans out, try to get those in as soon as possible. Uh, I understand that they're on the, on the snowbanks and especially on the corners, it creates blind spots in the water.
Good point. Yeah.
So, no medicine stories to me? They're too cold to move.
All quiet in the sixth ward. There have been a couple complaints of people going on top of the pond and eating it down. So we've got to be careful of that. I mean, I've heard about it. I've saw some pictures of some people. It's very dangerous that ice is, we know it's that it could be, so we don't need that. Glad you said that. So just to tell the public about that.
Well, good news is I had on, come on behalf of the fire department doing their training. They do do training through the extract from that. But I watched them lay across the summer, it was break through the ice. But okay, so but there, you know, but thank you for that.
We'll appreciate that.
Right, Mr. Beckwith.
First of all, Mr. Yaman would say that's Yaman Park, not Yaman Park. What do you want in there? Um, obviously we all know about the pothole. We've got a good solution. I'm having these uh, five gallon buckets made up. They're gonna have a handle on it. In the bucket, you're only going to want to put twelve ounces of coffee in it. The only way you're not going to spill your coffee anywhere in New York State is in the corner.
In place.
Oh. Yeah, that's been going on about the sidewalks, but one point in view that one of you guys just mentioned. I've seen so many people in the summertime when they're there, they still walk in the street. So.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, which I had said from day, I think I mentioned in one of the first common council meetings, I just real quick that I made uh, the first guy elected was, I'd like to make a fine that people walking, walking in the streets, not on the sidewalk, they should get the fine. You know, we held these uh, property owners and landlords accountable for taking care of the sidewalks, even, you know, in the summertime, not even the wintertime, and people still walk in the street.
It is amazing how many people don't wear winter boots, winter clothes in the winter. They're wearing shorts.
Yeah, me too. But whatever, I just threw that out there because even in the summertime, we know who's the sidewalk. We're responsible to take care of them no matter what it is. They have a great sidewalk. You know, salt stuff this year. If you saw the article on the news the other day where they had a lawyer on there. You know, this is a salt shortage. It's a documented, get pictures, document, you went around getting salt. Can she get sued, you know, but it's just, it is what it is. Wear some shoes and hopefully you don't fall. Walk the snowbanks are usually soft. Stay out the sidewalk where it's all ice. Watch with the snow. You fall down, you don't get hurt. Cows can do it all the time.
Some didn't read the all of it.
Worth of wisdom.
Sometimes it's not worth showing your sidewalk. No, really. It's, yeah, it just makes it worse. Makes it worse. You know, it's just all common sense stuff. That's all you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Michaels.
Uh, potholes, uh, I received calls on the um, ice melt. Um, last weekend I made a trek around town to find ice melt. They own low TSC and Country Max are totally out. Ended up going to Home Depot over in Ithaca, but they still had a couple of pallets left. I'm sure that's going to go quick.
Yeah. Yeah.
They don't know.
Now they're all headed to Home Depot.
And uh, uh, one, uh, one concern regarding uh, cannabis and uh, the mayor also was part of that email string. Uh, I don't know what to, what to tell neighbors when uh, somebody else is uh, smoking next door and uh, you know, you have to uh, uh, partake as well, even though you don't want. But I left it up the court office to address. And that's all I get. Thank you.
As we, as we always ask, everybody to be a good neighbor first. Alright, moving on. So uh, thank you for input. Uh, approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a suit back with installment? Any questions, additions? All of you there?
Hi.
Alright, I understand.
Same, thank you. Agenda item number one, set public hearing of proposed local law to establish authority of the common council to approve by resolution of management. A motion to
I'll move it.
No, no, the second.
I'm concerned about this. I can't second it.
We can talk about that after you have a concern. After you make a motion, you can hold it down. I got second to this motion. I'll second it so we can talk. Thank you. Who made the motion?
I don't.
Just get a second. So just based on uh, reactions, everybody with their head down. So we can just talk about a couple of things here. First of all, um, let's talk about how, why we are and how we are and where, where we got here and why we're here. There was a audit in August twenty twenty one that was done by the comptroller's office. We have the twenty four non management land personnel that were not covered under any standard plan. The only reference was during to the department heads and deputy department heads in the two thousand eleven amended plan that was amended from nineteen seventy three and all that stipulation that law, which is what are current, which is what we're currently under. This is the amendment of that law we're asking to do is that law was to follow the most, I mean, to them since, since then, not clarified to them. So some departments have a couple, sometimes three unions that they can pick and choose from. Some were picking, choosing from each of those three, which was the best of what they'd given would be, which is fine. I'm not complaining about it. But it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily clear. So in that comptroller's office, that was the criticism of that. There was no direct, clear direction for these twenty forty four years. Now, you know, fast forward, I come into office and I have eight contracts in my drawer. Well, in the comptroller's response, the previous mayor had written in that response that uh, those contracts, there is contracts already written and they said there was somewhat already done, which wasn't true. There was also that, that all those contracts will be working on and they're working on that overall diligent plan in the uh, um, in uh, some October, I think it was, October of twenty twenty one, something to be brought to this county council to be dealt with. That nor was done either. Uh, when coming into office, there was uh, eight contracts in my desk drawer. Some say there was others, never had copies. Um, there was one other person saying there was a contract they had signed, but didn't have a copy and didn't have a signed copy, which creates another conflict. But honoring, try to honor what we, who, uh, the contract was signed on twelve thirty twenty one, two days before I took office. Those were done clearly not brought to this council, which is what the comptroller's office said had to be done by law. So the law required that the common council approve what these benefit packages look like and who they are. You can't just arbitrarily, myself as a mayor or any other mayor should not arbitrarily decide who would get what, if she'd go and then brought to this council. So the long-term plan of this is exactly that. This council would have full approval of this management plan, putting these twenty, now twenty two, fast forward from twenty four employees to twenty two employees by putting those into a management plan. So they're all handled on a consistent, continuous basis. During the last, so I've been talking with and working on this for basically two years. Last four months, we just escalated it up and it had four different renditions, making them, it could be five or six, but it was minimal for long. Renditions gone back and forth and discussions back and forth. Um, recently received the latest one from the attorney back on Friday. Personally, I have not even read it yet. Um, so it's been that busy and that many other things going on in the world to be able to deal with. Not that this isn't a priority and shouldn't be a priority, but it is a priority. So you, if you have read it, you've all released it and if you have read it, you've read it prior to I have, but I will, and we will go through. So what I've asked in a department head meeting and uh, telling and advertising that this would be out by that last week, that they would have a chance to review that and the process wouldn't be the same, that they would write their concerns to uh, the administration of finance director. We went to review for those, that you would put them, compile them together for me. We are going to meet Monday to go through them with HR and finance to determine the financial impact and what their concerns are and whether that needs to go on. Probable solutions to that and all the amendments to that. Then the following week, we will meet with personnel committee, start meeting with personnel committee to talk about the overview of the entire management comp plan, which would then be followed by individual meetings for each one of those respondees to have a response direct one-on-one so that they're not just hearing on my ears and to think that it's just my design and my plan, that it would be done by the management personnel committee. The personnel committee would then make the recommendation, they sit down, we go to have a tea, no different than would be similar to a contract that management team would sit down, we're managed, uh, sorry. We, we review that again, making the recommendations and then our, our bring to review as a total council. It would all be distributed out to everybody again, bring it to the council for their review on March eighteenth. And that March eighteenth wasn't really necessary. It would be a public document back out to the public and everybody here again on March eighteenth to review as a group and to start reiterate, not necessarily have a discussion. I won't be here at that. To, that's yours, Mr. Beckwith. And we will, uh, and that March eighteenth will be and launch to, to help everybody start looking at and get that. At that point, then to our next, uh, April first meeting, then that old reviews and those acceptance will be taken in based on those responses and everybody else's chance to respond back to the council's poll. And April first, then that document will be brought back as a live document to the entire group to again, review and ratify as a total group. So again, this public hearing, which will happen at the next meeting is to uh, basically rescind and give us the ability to have this management comp plan, which would be reviewed and decided by the same body that's actually moving this law. So this, we've got this, this resolution allows that to happen for that intent and the intent is that. So nobody is taking away anything, but it's just trying to ratify and clarify what has already been directed and done by this group. My only other option would be after that is to follow through with this law in those eight contracts that are written, which do not comply with this law and we've been letting it go and I'm continuing on with that law. And I will hold that letter of that law effective immediately if, if we don't do that. And that was, is going to cause more controversy and problems that I don't think is necessary and I don't want to put anybody through that. I don't think that's necessary. I think concerns and things could be redlined and discussed, but it's to be done, but we need to build this management plan as a future and not necessarily bind up people that are currently here. For example, one person has talked about retiring next year and you know, and they feel comfortable with that contract. My recommendation would be to this body is to redline that contract and allow that contract for that duration. And then his predecessor would be the one that would fill that. And so that would be a solution that I would recommend. That would be recommended to personnel committee. They would prove it, ratify it, then it goes to this whole body and group. So I, I just want to make sure that everybody understands how the process is and how that's going to happen and the, the probabilities of doing that. And I also want to say that where it is so far has been open dialogue and I think it's been positive conversations with the department heads and their deputies and, and the other people that's been going through. That has not been adversarial or any but that, and I want to keep it that way because we have a job to do. We've had great proficiency in doing that. I'll maintain my professionalism either way. And I'm asking them to do the same. Expect nothing less than from them to be able to do that and try to understand where we need to go as a totality of the city of being responsible to our constituents, both financially and programmatically and to the law. And the law states that what we are doing now is not, we're not adhering to the law. So and I, I continue to allow that, hire new people. We've had this discussion. They know what their benefits are. They know where they're at. They know where that's going to go and I will hold up to that part of it. The part of that is to buy a management plan that works so that every one of our employees are under a directive, under a piece of document. If we have, we have continual problems with our um, union contracts on a weekly, monthly, daily basis. We address those by looking at that contract and getting an interpretation. Sometimes we don't agree with the interpretation with the union and that goes to arbitration. And, but we had to have something to start with the document and that's what we're asking for here. If you read that law, which I'll be glad to read it because it's one sentence that says that they are equal to or better than what their union is in paraphrase. Um, that does not solve the overall problems and overall concerns that we have and we need to deal with in a day-to-day basement from a management point of view. Um, we can't, you know, we need to get this stuff clear. We need to get, make sure it's documented and that's, this is the beginning process of that and it's
I want to add to what the mayor's saying too. So we're out of compliance with the comptroller's office, right? We, we have to fix this and we have to follow the law. Yes, we, you know, each take care Yes, we, you know, each take care of our own boards, but we also have a responsibility to the taxpayers of the city. That's what we do. That's what we took an oath to do and we need to do it. So, I just let the process play out, just let it play out, see what happens. Everybody is, I feel, jumping because, and change is hard, to- totally agree, but everybody is jumping to conclusions. We need to let the process play out. We need to be in compliance with the New York State Office of the Comptroller and we are not.
Miss Lee.
Thank you. Um, first of all, ever since your tenure started as mayor, you've been about trying to clean up old things that were not efficient, not working well, going back to the handshake days. Uh, the previous administration cleaned up some stuff. There's been a lot to clean up and I appreciate that.
No criticism either way.
That has to, that has to happen. I think we could all agree with that. And so, I'm not I'm not against the idea of a management plan. I would just like to see the plan, which we didn't receive. I would like to see it and I need a paper copy. I don't want to read it on my phone or on an iPad. To better understand and I can't do it a couple days before the meeting that we're gonna discuss it for something that important and that long. I need a little more time to talk to people.
I'm agreed and understood. I just want to clarify as we go along and just to make sure we clarify because we make more of one point.
Right.
So, my understanding of that document now, that it go out as a draft, this, so what is?
The management plan itself is a draft?
No, we, we'll, we'll make sure that everybody gets that draft again. Recognize process, it's going to change your life. So this, this, I haven't even read it yet.
No, I appreciate that and, and I understand you've been working on it for two years. I wasn't aware of that. I would like to be more aware of like what's in the works. Um, twenty-nine point six or twenty-nine dash six, I think is the sticking point because without knowing what the plan is, by, by getting rid of that, that says that they get equal to or better. It feels like pulling the rug out before you know what's going to catch you. So I, I think for me, I would feel more comfortable doing this after we see the plan.
Again, I, I want to, I'd like to move, I would, you know, moving this forward to make that happen. I'm not like so it's, it's a cart for the horse kind of situation. If that's not the directive of this council to do this, I'm going to go to an extreme measure here. Then I, I am going to surrender to the comptroller's office that we're refusing to change the law.
We're not refusing. We've let it go for so long, what's another?
Exactly. What's, if you're, if you have the ultimate point, you have the ultimate control of deciding what is in that document. Why, what, what is the reservation in changing the law and having that carry?
The reservation is that there's this space where we don't know what's in the document, we don't know what we're giving them, but we're taking away that security of equal or better.
Nothing's being taken away and, and they have all been discussed and we've gone through each one of them. But some of the things that, that, that are concerns that have been listed are you know, items that, there's, there's many of those things that are hourly employee items, for example, that don't apply to management account people.
Okay.
And they should, that's why that law is incompetent. The law is incompetent on its face, end of story. So whatever that case might be, we're not establishing anything precedent from there on. We're saying it's going to be part of that management comp plan and we can work out that detail. But there is, there should be no reservation in changing and affecting the law to make it, so we're working towards a resolve to make that law what it needs to be. And that's all this step is doing, like, and, and there would be, there would be no reason to not do that, knowing the consequence and what it is. And it's not like we're getting rid of that law and it's up to the mayor at that point. It's up to this council. Or I'm only putting together legislation and the documentation and trying to do it in that professionalism manner that makes sense for all. And i- is it going to resolve everybody's problems and conflicts? Probably not. But we have, you know, like, like I've always said in negotiations and I've said it clearly recently as far as sales tax negotiation. If everybody doesn't walk away with some kind of concern, then maybe it wasn't there. But really what has been proposed to, to everybody for the management plan, from the initiatives and the incentives, is, is not hurting anybody. And in the end, it's benefits, because, let me use an example. If they, if they use cash out benefits to cash out your, your vacation time that was unused. And instead of get, that is not a pensionable payout. If you're getting that in a salary base, instead of getting that number, it becomes pensioned. We have, we're averaging forty percent more than their base salary average plus in benefit packages that are being paid out outside of that by man, by not managing this the way we need to manage. And I, it's not that I don't think our department has earned worth that, I'm not saying they're not doing that. But let's put it, let's be fully transparent to what it is. Let's put it out there exactly what we're getting paid instead of outside of that.
That would be really helpful to see a comparison.
So, and that's
On paper.
And that's, that's, you know, the, the whole the comparable to what? Because it's all about interpretation. There is no interpretation now. And to do that, so there's, you know, you have the six that have contracts, there was eight, six now. You have six that are contracts, whatever, maybe less than that. But, and we're not even taking that away. We have, we don't, they don't even have it. So if I, if, if otherwise, if we don't start working towards doing this and we don't put a bottom line, ground line to this, and not dragging this out, dragging it out, I'm not going to keep not complying to the law, knowing not complying to the law. I will start up a pal, upholding what is the law and what is written in that law to do that. I don't agree with that law. I, I agree with something that's not, that's not accurate and that's not fair and accurate to me what they have.
So why not bring us all on board and let us see the, the contract and like talk, talk, if you want to be totally transparent, let's look at it and talk about.
And, and again, so.
The piece.
So, for the last four months, we have been doing that with everyone and them to be able to do that, the management plan.
It's not with us, so we make the decision.
Understood. But until we get to that final resolution, that would be the time to be able to see that. Okay? Would you want us to repeal this and then get to the final resolution? Yeah, that's part of the process. The problem is, is that you guys, it basically, if they should follow the letter of the law of the contracts, the union contracts. That's what nineteen seventy-three, two thousand eleven, maybe two thousand and nineteen say. Right. Okay, okay. So that, that's what we should abide by. As a police officer growing up in my career.
It's been, that's been repealed.
Oh, what is?
The council repealed that specifically in two thousand and eleven. Repealed seventeen.
Yeah, replaced it with what they came with in twenty-eleven.
Yeah, so again, but just, just don't let you understand. That's fine. That's what you want to do, Billy. Here's what, here's what happened. We had, for example, if you went through the police. Can I give you a second? Okay. When you go as a police officer, any job, a firefighter, you have a clinical, you're the chief, okay? And if you want to be the chief, you have these expectations that the benefits that I had as a patrol officer, a sergeant order, is you go through the ranks, that you're going to get them as the chief. And all of a sudden they're swiped away from you. That's a problem. That's a, that, that is a problem. I, I'm not sure what benefits are swiped away. Well, anything that you, if it's not, if anything's different from the union contract and you're giving them the benefits or you're giving them a contract, that's different from the union contract, that's taking them away. Yeah, um, health insurance increases, anything like that. It should be the same as the buy, as the contract. Okay, then that's what we'll do. That's my point. So right now, your police chief is at thirteen percent. And the union's at sixty. I'll make that change tomorrow. He'll pay more. How's your opinion? His contribution rate is thirteen percent. Sixteen percent is more than thirteen percent. He's going to pay three percent more. And I'll, and, and that's, and that's. See now, this is the problem. Exactly right. You're making threats. I'm not making threats. I'm making a statement, Billy. I'm making a statement of what the problem is with the system. If the, if you want to go by that law, then I need to go by that law. It's not that way. There, there, if, if a contract, if there was an agreement written, which, which I don't have a copy of that agreement, but I'm taking his word for it. But if there's an agreement is there that says that that was agreed upon price, I'm going to stay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to, I'm honoring that. Okay, I'm honoring that, even though it wasn't approved by this department, because I agree with you a hundred percent. They earned that. They earned all of it. Nobody's taking away their, you know, so the other, you know, their
Vacation time.
Their vacation time, nobody's taking, taking away any of that. I, I should, a hu- hundred percent, not taking that away.
They can, they can cash that.
If, 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 if they have, let's say, equate four weeks of vacation time. If they have equated four weeks of vacation time and that equate, that vacation time, you know, they can't take that time off, so they're cashing it out at the end of the year. I'm not encouraging them not to take that thing off, but we're giving them twenty, I think it was twenty days time off. And then that four weeks of pay, what that pay value is, is added to their base pay. So now that comes pension. I don't know how anybody gets hurt there. And there's already, we've already stepped, because a police and fire has been addressed. We have a step increase from patrolman to sergeant, sergeant to lieutenant, lieutenant to deputy chief, deputy chief to chief. So there's a stepping increase every one of them. We fixed that. So we, we maintain that difference and we can continue to maintain that. So none of that has been taken away. None of that has been a threat to the team. It's been perfectly clear to them on every bit of that. So all I ask is hear the process, hear all the concerns, go through every bit of that. Let the personnel committee go through every one of those concerns, one-on-one, they'll be able to hear that directly, make a recommendation, bring it back to this group, but I, I go through that effort when you're going to stand with the law, that doesn't make sense. I, I just want to see some good faith efforts that that's going to move forward because we can't react based on, you know, independent people's or independent personalities or independent likes or dislikes. There's nothing to do that. We need to maintain that professionalism, move towards that epic resolve. This has just been dragging out in my world for way, a long time. There's been a lot of changes, a lot of big challenges and, and it's been difficult situation and um, and I, you know, we've been able to maintain those good positive directives and that's the job that we need to do as a total group.
Mayor, I hear the frustration in your voice and the thing is, it's new in my world. It's, it's just like just landed in my lap and I can't even see what it's based on and I would be, I would be nervous. For instance, I don't understand what, what the redlining means. Like what does that mean? The person who's going to retire, does that mean that they get what they've expected?
Yes.
So you're saying sunset?
Yes.
There'd be a sunset on folks that are currently in, in position.
All of them?
I, I, that's, again, I don't want to make that determination based on what this whole group is. We kind of really look at what those concerns are and if they're not mitigating, and that's why you need to move the process. So the personnel committee will be able to hear it. You're here one-on-one, you're on it. So you would hear it directly, one-on-one, exactly what their concerns on, what their concerns are and our discussion back and forth in the series of compromise to do it. No different, this is no different than any union contract. So hang on to your hats, people, because we have a lot of things going on and a lot of things that we need to fix to get the, get these righted for our financial preservation forever, for a long time. We walked away from our retiree benefits because we got a little bit nervous and jerky about it. And you know, I, you know, I can't, I can't keep adding time to it because I get, everybody's nervous about it, I get it. I recognize it. I respect that. I've listened to that. I've been more than patient, more than fair and diplomatic in the whole process and will continue to be so. Will not stop doing that and um, but we, we also need to be understanding and fair and recognizing that we need to move things in a positive direction. And I argue that when we bring this forward and through that personnel committee's process and let everybody have a swing at that, that's the time you need to really review that. If you decide in April first, you see that document, just a lot of time, you didn't have that two-week time period, timeline I just outlined. And that two weeks isn't enough time to dissolve that result and understand what that is. And if you want to have any side-by-side comparisons, I'm sure, I'm sure the screen would be uh, squeeze some time in to make whatever comparisons want to be. If we generally as a whole, to be able to do that, personnel committee, I rely on them to give their input back. That's three of the members that are here, which is the maximum we're allowed in one room. They can sit there, they'll have that information, they can pass that back and forth. Those can be followed through from continuing on and, and to move that forward uh, at that point. Then that's the real document you're looking at. Right now, it's all speculative. They could change, we could throw the whole thing out and start over. You know, it could be for an hour.
Do that too.
I understand, but that's, that's the whole point. That's, that, I'm making this completely transparent. I'm saying, you know, it got, it has to go through the process. I'm allowing them all for their input in. Every one of them, ha- every department has their right to come back with that input. I'll sit one-on-one and talk to them in a diplomatic manner. Try to come up with a resolve to help resolve it because some of these, that'll build their personnel committee and they'll have a chance again, if they did resolve it, to come back to the personnel committee, discuss what their concerns are. And then they, now it's not just me, my decision, because this, this shouldn't be about me. This isn't about me. This is about fixing this as a global solution. And then the personnel committee, and then still, even at that point, if they don't agree with it, we'll let them stand up again. Or I would hope that the people that are on the personnel committee would articulate what they're trying to say and what they're doing. I will too, because I'll, you know, I want to try to sell their side of the story to them, not about my opinion base. I'm just trying to create something as a general whole and what has to happen and what their concerns are. And I, you know, I don't need, I, we don't want, we don't want to put everybody into that anxiety state. We need to continue to work and we have and we've done this and we've had and, you know, uh, tense discussions, whatever you want to say with each one of the departments independently, but we maintain our professionalism. There's nothing, no anxiety, no, I mean, like I said, there's no anxiety. There's anxiety. Uh, I'm sure, but I'm not, I'm doing everything I can to alleviate that and make sure that that, that does. And I'm telling people I want to help hold them ho- whole, I want to make them whole in whatever way we can as a group. And I'm sure that that's what's group. I'm sure my intent is no different than anybody else. Right. Here that's there and nobody else is trying to do that. So all I do is ask, respect the process, respect the trust in what we're trying to do and what we're trying to put together and follow through with that. And again, if you're in April first, that's not enough time, push it back further. If it, if it's not acceptable and we need to rebuild, that's, that's the input. Let's do it. Let's do it out, transparent, public to do that. If it moves it on past April first, we keep moving on. But let's get this moving this way so we know we're making the effort in a direction that we're going to do it, say, you know what, we're just going to read it the way it is. I can't accept that. So I'm drawing a heart.
Clarification on the seventies, nineteen seventy-three issue, so um, I can't find that resolution on file here.
I guess.
What, what uh, what we do have on file as far as local laws filed that year, we have those on file. Um, that this was not done by local law, that it must have been done by resolution. Uh, September seventeenth of two thousand nineteen, the council explicitly um, rescinded that resolution, that nineteen seventy-three resolution. So.
What about the two thousand one?
That, that remains in effect, the two thousand eleven local law number two, which created chapter twenty-nine that has those provisions about benefits being no less than.
Right, that section.
Those are put in place in two thousand eleven, remain in effect. But the nineteen, there, there's been reference, it's nineteen seventy-three resolution. As I said, I, I can't find a copy of it in the city files, but.
I have a, I have a copy of all. I'm the law council person that said on that, the council backed down.
Uh, but.
After that.
The council voted unanimously September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen to rescind it.
So again, the relevance to me is, none of those done properly, none of those done right. This is moving the effort toward making sure that it's done right, following through with everything we had, we're maintaining everything the way it's going to be till we get through this process and then we'll make the adjustments necessary.
And I'll go after it.
Mr. Scott.
So, I, I've asked to be very clear about what a yes and uh, no vote means before. This is what I'm hearing. A yes vote tonight means that we start the process. We will have multiple opportunities to not only change, sculpt and/or ditch the entire thing by vote of this council. And this starts the process. It also shows that the, the comptroller, that we are willing to work and come in compliance with them. Is that, somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
Simply put, yes, absolutely. So we have a public hearing and we have the vote that night. Now, the votes are a public hearing. It's all, this is only, number one, this is what you're voting for today. It's only just that public hearing. Is all, this is all, number one, this is what you're voting for today, it's only just that public hearing. To polish that law that we know is inadequate, and to establish that we have a management, that's it. And what the management plan is, is not that vote next month, or next meeting. This public hearing is that, is not to vote on the management. The management plan would be the fa- following timeline, and if it's not April first, the timeline I spelled first, I would like. I spelled out, I would like to do, because the problem you're missing is, the few people that have called you are not, not necessarily the ones that are being hurt by this. There's many management plan people that are being affected by this, that are not, that are being left behind, this is, this is a benefit to them. So they're being, they're not being compensated equitably for what it is, and there's all, and beyond, the reason for some of the urgency is that. So we had negotiations, I I guess I can talk about this, I'm gonna stop me when I can. And we had negotiations with SEIU today, hopefully that's uh close. And, you know, those compensation pay goes across, so those SEIU, SEIU employees are near. These non, these non uh CBA contracted people. That if if we don't adjust their pay bands at the same time, now all of a sudden, we have people that are doing more, more important, uh more not important.
You have more responsibility.
Thank you, more responsibilities.
Getting paid less than.
Getting paid less than the people that are working beside them, and so that's like, we have, we have to, we have to move this forward, and it's like, I can't. You know, I can't express of why the employees of, you know, creating a timeline, shooting for the April first, I have employees that are six months into it. You know, two P, two employees are just within a week apart, I think, you know, uh the screen was another six month, it's up for the six month review. That's up for part of this, that's all part tied to this management plan, I have other reviews that haven't been done, that are past that timeline. Because I keep kicking the can, keep kicking the can, keep kicking the can, again. This group has the ultimate say in it, you have ultimate plan, you have ultimate time to read it, like what's out there right now, again. If it was hyper important, and it was part of this decision, or even the next meeting's vote, I would have certainly taken the time to read it. But this is legal, after going through the legalese of going back, it's worked back and forth, then we're dancing back and forth, then we go to a different legal counsel. Because AJ was previewing it as we went, we go to a different legal counsel, different point of view, different aspects. They have to make sure it all fits for everybody, and we're, so deliver different change, and that's the changes that have been set back.
Okay, couple things. Couldn't the contrast be renegotiated without rescinding them?
Absolutely.
Okay, um why don't we have a corporate council? I mean, AJ left a month ago, why don't we have?
Oh, I guess someone wanting to do it.
It's a very small pool in China City, it's very small.
Even outside the city, we've operated all over, and we just can't get candidates.
We're having a very hard time hiring in a number of places right now.
I was just gonna say, the screen would like, if we don't get this, I see I could, you contract, we have positions, we can't fulfill because of that. You know, the 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 labor pool, you know, is uh difficulty to hire people, please hire, you know, it it's difficult, and we're. We need to keep being competitive and keep responsible in our actions to paying people appropriately, and this is a hundred percent. Moving towards that direction.
Okay, so doesn't the two thousand eleven say equal or better than?
And and a paraphrase statement, yeah.
Okay, so, but in your example that you used, you know, right now, they're paying thirteen percent. Fine, we'll make them pay, we'll make them pay what everybody else is, that's not equal, that's.
Well, cool too, that's equal to.
But it could be better, you know, I mean, you're going directly to.
I understood, I I I understood. And if this group, if that's what the management plan wants to be, it might get better than, that's up to this, that's up to the management. But there's nothing in the law that it gives me an authorization to pay them that, I'm not saying they're not worth that, I wanna honor that, because they've worked on that.
Well, that's what you just said, you said, you know, fine, thirteen percent, I'll make them pay sixty, I'll do it tomorrow, you said.
Because the law states that, either I need to adhere to the law, or we get rid of the law. What are your choice?
I find it hard to believe that you don't have the management system that we could look at.
But I I heard earlier, based on this topic, that that there's. Multiple departments that we have, and there's multiple unions that go across to departments, and that's part of the concern. The concern to juggle with here is that you have department heads. That it's not, it's not people across all the different departments for to manage, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
And so we now have a discrepancy between what some departments are paying, because there's different union agreements within those.
Or what should be, or what should be, or you get hourly employees, you get, you get contract people that are working twenty-four hour shifts. And they get two shifts, and they get what's called Kelly time, and does that apply to the management? Those are all decisions that this body needs to make, it should be making in the daily.
That's clearly in here that that's not, it's already in here.
Clearly it's in there well.
It's clearly in here that at no point in time is management compensated for overtime. It's clearly in there.
Okay.
I'm just saying that.
Okay, it is, it is.
So that example.
It it is.
I I if that's happening, then that's a concern.
It's happening.
It's happening.
What else, I keep going, it's happening.
See, when council drafted it, two thousand eleven back then, it was drafted by the city attorney, and it's gone through several variations, but we got to that point. Uh so I, I think the, and the best effort to move forward with this is, has to have a workshop here. So that everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
It it's, how many times have we been audited since thousand eleven?
Right, okay. Once, oh, it's two, two, twenty twenty-one, they audited, the same thing we found in two thousand eleven, they said it twice. Two thousand eleven, when they were audited, they said you were doing this wrong, no no action. Twenty twenty-one, audit again, same exact thing, no action, only worse, we were stealing.
We get audited every year by a regular audit, just with specific.
Yeah, this is the comptroller.
This is the comptroller, so.
Yeah, so again, that's, you know, I I don't, I'm not trying to dispel anybody else, I'm not trying to do anything but that, and, you know, again, oh. I'm not gonna, not trying to honor everything that's been done, but if, you know, I just, we just need to, you know.
That's my concern, my own sense of integrity, or people who are hired with a contract, I wanna, even if. Even if it was a handshake deal, or even if we don't have the contract, whatever, we come to the understanding of. That's what they were hired with, I wanna, I wanna honor that, and I understand that going forward, um. We can, you know, I mean, I guess we're having trouble finding people who wanna work for us, but. We can trim off some of those benefits, because back in one times, we're good, everybody has great benefits. I just want our current employees to feel secure that we're going to honor what they're expect, yeah, what they're promised.
That's the phrase of the red line we discussed, continue that message.
So it's like, so where's your grandfather? Current managers, when you grandfather.
You you can redline this any way we wanna do it, we will sit down and work it out, if that's, you know, some kind of hybrid, with each one independently, to be able to have happen.
And you're saying, this is the first step that we need to show the comptroller that we are attempting to come into compliance, that we're working on a more efficient plan.
Hundred percent, and you have ultimate.
I really think we need to put the grandfather clause in there, because what we've gone through in the past, or whatever, however you wanna classify it, clause. We've had people that retired, we were paying them, no documentation, they couldn't come up with the documentation.
Been messing.
Right, it's just, it's not. Understood, so again, we're not talking about a crazy amount, they can be redlined, and I I I want, I want the management comp plan to say nothing about that. And I know that's some of the nervousness, I told them about redlining and writing down in there, but. I'm trying to get them to understand the whole pie concept, if they don't wanna do it, then we'll redline that it. Two of my obviously said, we'll honor your contract to the end, even though it applies against that, again. That would be my proposal, and that's my 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 uh sell to this body, which is your decision ultimately, that you would make that decision, we would do that.
Most details are all part of the process.
Exactly right.
Now we're talking about starting the process, and this body can say no, because one of the things.
They could say.
I definitely will stand against is, is these, well, I'm just gonna call them management, you know, call them whatever you want. Management needs to be doing better than the people that they manage, because there are senior people, and they take the heat. As it goes up a lot, I think that's really important, what I'm hearing is, everybody has a lot of little concerns. I'm more concerned that if the way I bottom lined it, and I guess I made it really simple, that if a yes vote is starting the process. That we start the process, as long as we're guaranteed, we have the opportunity to shoot down anything that comes along that we don't like.
Nice vote.
It does, I mean, if I'm off, somebody tell me I'm off on what we're talking about just tonight. Because there are things that I'm sure I'm not gonna like, I'm sure every one of us is not gonna like.
Really don't, I really think that somehow this has been made into a mold, and maybe it's like you said. About anxiety and people's concerns, and I get that, I'm respecting that, uh but, you know, from my vision and what I see happening is. You know, redline documents where the concerns are, to make sure it's understood, but also building it for the future. We had situations, we have situations where we have, I'll talk specifics, where you have a person that wants to come out. Of a union and become a deputy chief, let's say, right, and a couple different cases, um and, you know. If the value is that that other person is rewarding all those benefits, or is getting, be able to cash out more as as a. A lower rank, and that, because I've been on disposal with what it is, as a lower rank and be able to have that benefit, that's not really a benefit to become chief. It's it should be beyond financial, just to make that clear, that they should wanna be that, because that's part of it. But to your point, that nobody should be working through the system to not have that, and goal to be the same. And if they work through it, and they, you know, maintain sick time, maintain all that, that's a whole nother story, but they maintain all that, and they'll go away. None of that should be stripped away, ever, even if they're currently now a patrolman, that's gonna be our future chief. We can't take that away either, you know what I mean, so like, that longevity and that importance, and that growing with that. Needs to come with the process, and nobody's trying to strip that away, but we just have to have a global understanding, where everybody falls under what pool. And some general basis, some unified basis, so we're not, like, if we have the red line, a half dozen, dozen people from, or twenty-five people. From now, for a few years, deep manager, but right now, you know, we're doing it. Way too many, way too much, way different variations, way to benefit, because I like that person, and I didn't like this person, and I like everybody, so I don't mean it that way. But those decisions should never be allowed, and we're trying to build this to be that way, so we're all saying the same thing, and send that all on. It's just, you know, you can child challenge the process, now we get there, you guys have the swing of the apple, I wanna get it done. As exponentially as we can for everybody's benefit, the people that are not complaining, not calling you complaining, that should be complaining, but they're excited to be able to get. Compensated to where they need to go, and yeah, run, and the other consider all in in between themselves.
Is there a management plan right now, draft, a management plan?
Uh there there is a draft that came back from customer.
Okay, but we haven't seen.
Yeah, because.
Just came back.
The process will be, you know, again, I I I don't, I I wouldn't say it's a totality, I'm not, you know the responses back, I don't know what, how many of those changes.
And I I may not have been clear in instructions, you know, provided to me, um. You know, that came back. It was revised based on ongoing discussions and concerns, to my knowledge, it had that most recent copy, it not been reviewed. Um internally yet, so um.
And where did it come?
I received it back from council Friday afternoon, with her comments, her latest revision on it. With, and I immediately sent it out to all the department heads, because they had not seen a copy since the new attorney had been working with us. So the previous copies they had seen had been when AJ was here, um she and the mayor and I had had several discussions, it was her fourth. Version of her seeing it, which is the first time that we thought she had actually captured all the questions that the mayor kept bringing up as he was speaking to different people. So that I could send it out to all the department heads to say, after having this new council on board. Here is the version where we think we've gotten all the, all the comments that people had brought to the mayor addressed, please take a look. And my instruction on Friday afternoon to all the department heads was, take this home over the weekend, read through it. And send me whatever concerns you still have, I will compile those and get them back to the mayor, so I came into my inbox today, I've got, I think, about five or six. Different uh department heads have emailed me now, and I've started putting those together, that I'm gonna consolidate all the concerns and questions that they've brought forward. To get back with the mayor again, and would we see those concerns and question?
Sure, you can, the personnel committee, for sure.
Well, all of them.
If you want, I will boil it down to whoever wants, I mean, ultimately, we're boiled down to what you're getting to, the sap, right, we're trying to get to the root. The root solution and what that has to be.
Yeah, we're just trying to get a feel for.
Understood, and that's why we're having the conversation.
What was old, what's new, how they compare, I understand it's not a direct comparison, and that makes it difficult, and I don't want you to have to like, you know.
But everybody will be able to hear every one of those people's concerns, from always, you know, paraphrasing it, you know, not, I don't want anybody to have to feel. That they have to go in front of people and feel alienated by not uh sharing their concerns. Um uh so I just, you know, we'll we'll do it honestly and openly, and and try to address everyone of those concerns. Give us a swing at that apple first, if it doesn't work, then now have a chance to go to personnel, if that doesn't work, then now have a chance to go to the full body. We'll we'll bring their concern as a personnel to the full body, that's the process, and then um we'll move from there.
The reason why we didn't receive a uh copy of the the latest draft.
I've sent it over to Andy late on Friday afternoon when I got it, so I don't know.
Yeah.
I I.
Uh I, this is the first I've heard that we're working with an attorney. And and this.
We happened the whole time, we were working first with AJ, and then the same.
Well, that's, that I know, but I didn't realize that we hired a firm to.
Not for this loan, she does all of our personnel matters.
And she is who?
Kristen Smith, she's at Bonshannick and King, she's been working with us on all our different union uh arbitration and that stuff as well. She's been the, I think we have four different attorneys right now, doing different aspects of work for the city, depending on which department.
We we just hear about this now.
Which part?
Working with these attorneys.
We have this, what are we gonna do, we're not gonna have an attorney to do our work, that we have to do the day to day process.
Well, and who was him?
We have to show up the court, we have to show the people who come to court.
Right.
So we've got different, different attorneys on.
We've always had retainer attorneys for the different law, labor.
We did, but we always had our.
Right, we lack a proper counsel, we've gotta have people to give us legal advice, I'm not an attorney, I don't pretend to be, I would not ever make that assumption. Without having a proper attorney who can say.
Of course.
No, realistically, I think that's where we're gonna end up, is everything gonna get settled out, well, because you're not gonna find anybody coming here for corporate counsel in the city of Portland. Unless they're getting close to retiring their own business, you know, unless they're really young, and they're really young.
Just big enough, not quite big enough, so I think we've labored this.
You're right, yeah.
We've labored this, and we need to move this along, unless somebody has something different to add, I feel like we're doing a rhetorical circle, um and I'd like to call the vote. This is a vote to rescind, this is a vote to have a public hearing, to have the recent management plan.
So this does not rescind, this is just for the public hearing, it's starting the process?
Yes, this authorizes me to advertise, this authorizes me to advertise for a public hearing, which would be held in March fourth.
We need to start the process, so the people that are going to be affected by it are treated fairly, and so that we come in compliance, in compliance with the comptroller. I'm all about making sure that the management team here, and that extends a long ways in a city. Is being rewarded for what they take on, because they take on an awful lot.
This is.
I'm also not about being on compliance with the comptroller.
Are we gonna, this is a vote to have a public hearing, and after the public hearing, we're gonna go to rescind, are we rescinding it tonight? Just no, so there is. No, we have a public hearing.
Doesn't say there is.
Then then we rescind that, after the public hearing, we have a vote now.
And then, I was confused on that.
Well, I don't ever, I don't have to do this, but if I was consistently, I mean, I need a time and notice, we've had a public, we have, we've had a resolution to have a public hearing. And then we have the public, and then we vote on it, so you get three bites of the apple every time we do something big. And then after that, you'll have another chance to agree with the comp plan or not agree with the comp plan, so we'd argue with you. If that by by rescinding this, that it actually can be a better situation, because now we can do everything that they want. Everything that they feel like they have now would be legitimately done according to the comptroller's response by what we're doing. So we have an independent contract, or a manager's incompetent.
I don't want a public hearing until I see the paperwork.
You can't rescind it, because business still has to continue, right, so this is still gonna be. Right, so this is still gonna be, what's gonna take place throughout until the new management plan is in, in effect.
We will continue the way we are, which, uh, even according to this, till the management plan is done. We can, because that would be, I don't think that would be fair to be, to, to do that. Yeah, okay, so we're gonna maintain everything the same till we get the management plan in place.
So the first page is our supporting documents has a draft and it says, propose local law to amend chapter twenty-nine. The administrative code to authorize the common council to adopt the management plan by resolution. And that's what we would be setting a public hearing on.
Councilmember Scott.
We gotta start it.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Vanello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
I appreciate it, and I think it's great to have the communication all the way along the way, and we will not change that. And I encourage anybody who would like to be on those one-on-one meetings, if you particularly have an interest liaison. Carpenter, if you have, if you have a concern, liaison directly for that group, please come. Please listen to that independently. I can't have more than four people on the personnel committee, you know what I mean, at one time. But, you know, I, I encourage them to pay attention, but anybody else that wants to come in one-on-one, look at. What the proposals are, what the plans are, what the concerns are. I will defend them and bring those concerns to everybody's concern. And anybody who wants to spend time, so in between now and then, anytime that works that in, get a hold of Jade, I'll set up a meeting or. We'll find, we'll let you, if you have interest, let us know afterwards. We'll make sure you're invited to those meetings. I have them to do that one-on-one. And we'll continue to be that way. And I really don't think this is.
Could we just get email updates about changes? Could we get a little more information? Just in our emails, because I can't leave work to attend.
Absolutely, yes, yeah, if you.
I don't feel like I need to be part of every meeting. I just wanna be kept abreast.
Yes, uh, uh, and that'd, yeah, well, that, that'd be great. I met with a constituent, one of your constituents the other day, was very vocal and had a nice long talk, spent the time. You know, probably, uh, hundred and forty-five minutes or so with them, and they were very appreciative once they understood everything was going where it does. But it's just difficult to get that information out there. I'm using that as an example because. If I know specifically what you're trying to get and look for, what you wanna know, we could help do that, but we, we are. Maxed to the beyonds, you know, I mean, and anything. I don't wanna give you not, give you what you can have, but if I have more specific, I'll have that. Details, details that you get and as much as you need, so you understand what they're. Proactive steps are, so you're not just hearing it, cause you're hearing it one side, you're not hearing whole side, you're not hearing whole.
I'm hearing the whole thing for the first time.
So, but again, so whatever we can do to help make you do that, so if you, that would be, we'll do whatever we can to. What do I say, uh, generalize.
So we can get, we can get what you.
I, I can forge what I sent to all the department heads.
I don't go right out.
I, I would appreciate a paper.
I'll have you walk downstairs after.
Agenda item number two, approval of the twenty twenty-five amended. Amendment to the municipal cooperative agreement for the Greater Tompkins County Municipal Health Insurance Consortium.
Resolved that upon receipt of review of the agreement, the Corland County Council approves of the meeting held February eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. Authorizes Mayor Steve to sign the two thousand twenty-five amendment. The municipal cooperative agreement effective January one, two thousand twenty-five. Of the Greater Tompkins County Municipal Health Insurance Consortium is recommended by the Board of Directors.
I'll move it.
Back with. Any questions? This is routine, no, no hidden surprises. Anybody else?
I think they have reduction in co-pay and then I read there that it's a lot smaller.
Uh, no, I, I don't know that any of those are changed.
Majority of the information was adding additional municipalities to the consortium.
I did see that.
Impressive the number.
Yeah, it's grown.
Yeah.
Of course, we entered a big hit this year and it grows. Who else? Okay, move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Vanello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number three, authorized agreement for the purchase of an aerial ladder fire truck.
Resolved that the City of Corland County Council authorizes Mayor Steve to execute a contract. Premier Fire Apparatus Incorporated, representing E-one manufacturing. For the purchase of one E-one custom typhoon one hundred foot aerial ladder truck. Uh, pumped for the base price of one million seven hundred ninety-two thousand fifty-five dollars. And via further resolve that Mayor Steve has further authorized. To execute municipal equipment bond to cover the necessary costs there above.
I'll move it.
Scott, Mr. Beckwith, any questions? This is a big investment.
Yeah, I just wanna know how, how the demo. When it's not even made yet. And if that's the case, these trucks are gonna be that much cheaper than the demo, just almost start making them.
Don't give them a secret.
Okay, that's fine, go sit down.
No, I think you gave us a really nice, concise email about how this was a good deal. I think for the public's benefit, if I can, if you said something.
Well, this is a good deal, I can say it's great news, isn't it?
As I spoke up, I spoke up there a couple months ago, that. The fire apparatus manufacturing, along with any type of, um, purchasing of things, is taking longer. It's harder to get parts, it's harder to make these things, and the duration is longer. Manufacturers, dealerships, in essence, buy slots in the line that builds the apparatus. So they buy these slots, anticipate, okay, I think we're gonna build a fire truck. That will be used as a demo model that will meet overall needs that we know about. So they put this in, in the system. So instead of us. Buying something today, perfect, what we need and going back for three and a half years and being put on the end of the line. We're looking at something that is on the line. It says, you know what? And then a committee looked at it, said, considering all of it, this will serve as the community. And it can be here in three months, cause it's on the line. So it started as a demo. Favorable, uh, tonight, it will become. Not a demo, it will become the city of Portland, and it's already in line to be here. And it's pivotal for us. The truck it's replacing is now getting to a point of liability and I'm concerned about it. We spoke about that here a couple months ago as well, and we'll be talking about an engine here in a little bit too. So it's all part of the whole replacement plan, so. Yes, sir.
Chief, we're locked in at this price?
We are. I mean, that's the contract price, that's what it is. If we start, uh, building it and there's things that are off by a little bit, there may be a change order. But any of that will be approved through the mayor and, and us as if we have to change it, but it's not gonna be substantial anyway, so we're good with that.
Didn't you say pay them for less?
Yeah, I anticipated over two million dollars for the purchase, and this is at one point seven. Because it was gonna be a demo model and it's, uh, it's, it's what it is. They are gonna take it to a couple shows.
Well, these guys go to the show, they already told what we were looking for, so they already have the feeling of self, you know, I know all this.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
I've been to the show.
Sometimes we don't wanna draw attention. We got a good deal and that's what we care about.
They got the next one started?
Any other questions?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Vanello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number four, authorized memorandum of understanding with SUNY Corland Police Department. Relating to coordination of law enforcement efforts to.
This resolved that the coroner, the county council does hereby authorize the mayor and police chief to execute a memorandum of understanding. With SUNY Corland Police Department relating to coordination of law enforcement efforts. Which shall remain in effect and bill unless terminated by either party upon a thirty-day notification of. Notification to the other party. Okay, and that's your word.
Mr. Thompson.
A second.
Miss Sullivan.
Um, so what, what does they agree to? What's the? The memorandum of understanding that they're gonna step it up more?
Just, it, it is one of those, uh, details that haven't been done, so that if, uh, if they need help or we can help. We can cross each other to build them.
It, it's the same. MOU is being resigned because of the change in city. It's, yeah, city's police chief. As the signature.
That's what we wanted them to help us out more.
Yeah, I, I think Chief, Chief, maybe talk about the relationship with SUNY PD and, uh, CPD, so that we can have. They can have a general.
Yes, this MOU has not changed from that MOU, Chief Sandy and Chief, uh, Catalano have signed in the past. But we're just updating it because of the change in administration, both the mayor and myself. Our signatures weren't on the last agreement. But the agreement does allow the campus to come off campus when requested to. When they can't come off campus just to investigate things unless requested by the police department. And also there's also the ability to go up there on campus with notifications that they're law enforcement, they're gonna be on campus to investigate crimes. And to interview their, um, students as possible witnesses.
So for example, SUNY could, SUNY PD could come down to pine press.
A pine request, yes.
So what would, what, what would be the parameters of making that request? Could you just make it or do you have to establish that our guys are all busy, we need you to move?
Affiliation between the house and the campus is all that takes. And now we talked to the land, we identified some of the, well, the occupants and the residents of that apartment as students.
Can we include Clayton F. on that?
Your work reports are retained.
And that has been done, I believe, by recently, and so, uh, you know, it's a great relationship and they work together well. It's great to have that, have that, so that in general, that's the idea. Anyone else? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the, any other questions? Sorry, move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Vanello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
All right, before adjournment, I just wanna make sure everybody is aware that, you know, doors are always open, please come in and communicate about it. Talk about, express your concerns, I, you know, I appreciate hearing them. You seem controversial at any time, but appreciate hearing that, let's sit down, let's talk about it. You know, your concerns are my concerns and how we make that all work together as a team. All unilaterally is important, and that's, that's important for everybody to recognize. There has been no animosity. That would, and I'd like to keep, if there is no animosity, it doesn't have to be that way. So I appreciate your input and I appreciate everybody's valued discussion, I'm glad we could do it publicly instead of. You know, they call people and try a lot, you will, I will not do that, as you know, and we'll continue to move this at the best. With that, I'll accept the motion for adjournment, so. Mr. Beckwith, Mr. Scott, always in favor. Motion adjourned at seven.